Glad to be here.
To the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God and invisible with liberty and justice for all.
Next item on the agenda is a roll call. Bill and Chris are not here. Angie.
Here.
Grant, Randy.
Here.
And I'm here. Next on the, item on the agenda is the claim approval. Numbers twenty-five, two ninety-one to twenty-five, three eighteen. Do I hear a motion to approve those claims?
A motion to approve.
It's been moved. It's second. Is there any questions about any of the claims?
I have one.
Okay.
APB number two five three oh eight. The attorney fee for Lloyd Jones. Where are we with that?
Uh, yeah, let's go ahead. I, I actually got it wrote down to ask you that quick and then when I talked to you, I lost it off. So. Uh, just give us a quick synopsis there.
I don't know where we are dollar wise for the attorney's fees. The court just issued a ruling. Uh, both sides filed motions for some of the judgment. So Lloyd Jones said that. None of the fines applied to him. We said that it did, he violated it. Court. Uh, found in our favor, the town's favor, adopted. Order that Adam dropped in. So it's everything that we put in there. Neither side addressed these though. We addressed the issue whether or not those applied on the ninety five. So next step is now that the court said that yes, the order that's applied and he's violated it, it's going to be a judgment. And so we intended to have an executive session to discuss kind of the legal strategy for the next. They'll be liable for the attorney's fees.
Okay. That's good to hear. After seeing all these. And then the other one I had was, what's the correction for the phone reimbursement?
You're, you're hitting all the big, big ones tonight, Andy.
No, that's a great question. Um, so we have what's called a payroll account. He's been being eight oh six. I have his reported number. Uh, I can't remember it off the top of my head. It's the account where when we pay for people's insurance and then take it out of their pay. It's kind of the account that washes that. Um, there's been a little issue in that account where I couldn't figure out why it wouldn't go zero. We identified what the issue was and the problem is the fact that. Steve has a um phone that's issued by the town, but he pays twenty-four dollars and three cents every month. For his personal portion of that. So when we identified the issue, this is a correction for this year for the three months that. It had not been done properly. There will be another correction because the same thing happened last year before we identified where the issue was. So that's what, so and it's not outgoing money. It's an internal administrative. Issue. Does that make sense?
Thank you.
Any other questions on the claim? All those in favor of passing claims twenty-five, two ninety-one to twenty-five, three eighteen vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passed? Three to zero? At this time. We will open up public comments uh. With a three minute time limit for any item that's on the agenda only. There's not a lot of items on the agenda tonight, but.
Couldn't have or question?
Yeah.
The one big thing on the agenda is a public hearing.
Right, so I'm not, yeah. I've already figured out we don't need comments on that yet. I figured that one out myself.
Look at you growing up.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is adopting the minutes uh from the June seventh, two thousand twenty-three town council meeting. Do I hear a motion to adopt the minutes of the June seventh meeting?
I make a motion to approve and adopt the minutes.
I'll second.
Uh, is there any questions on those minutes? All those in favor of adopting those minute vote by saying aye. Aye. Both. Minutes are adopted three to nothing. Next on the agenda is the public hearing for the Keller Development Annexation. So do we need to reset the town council meeting and? Or just open the public hearing? Okay, so we want to open the public hearing on uh the Keller Development Annexation. And uh.
Put it my way. I'll give a quick recap.
Okay.
Are and then uh I see Keller's here. Maybe if we could have them present and then that would allow the. Audience to reenact the minimum comments.
Well, that's good. Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Do we need to open the public here or no?
He said we just need to open it.
You can make a phone motion if you want. We'll say it's open.
It's open.
Uh, we're here on a petition signed by a hundred percent of landowners for annexation. As you recall, the plant commission made a recommendation for R three zoning at the May seventeenth town council meeting. Town council tentatively approved the R three zoning and the annexation. The council also approved the fiscal plan as modified at that uh meeting. Notice the publisher's public here early twenty days in advance with that requirement. This is just a public hearing today. Council cannot act on. Annexation ordinance until fourteen days after the public. So I hear what I said with the next council meeting unless for some reason the public. You also notice in the agenda packet, there's a letter of support on Hancock County dated June fifth, two thousand twenty-three. And one of Hancock Economic Development Council on June sixteenth, two thousand twenty-three. Again, those are in your agenda packet and will be included as part of the record for the public hearing. Keller Development presentation. Yes.
Good evening. My name is Greg Majewski with Keller Development. We are based in Fort Wayne, Indiana. Also, this evening is Don Galloway, president and one of the owners of Keller Development. As was said, stated, we are seeking um to have the property at three nine eight six South six hundred West Annex to the town of New Palestine. Um, the property, it's actually two parcels of land that share a common address outlined in wedges on this map up here. Um, we are seeking. Um, annexation to accommodate our proposed use of this property, which is a senior housing development. However, I want to. Emphasize that annexation itself would not be a green light for the projects. We're having to inform you about our intended use, but there is a. Follow-up approval process where the plan is not to be vetted um in order for this to happen. So this is, this is purely an annexation request. We're happy to provide other details as, as desired for what we intend. So we are. I'm sorry, I'll do a next slide. So we are requesting the two parcels totaling about six point seven acres be annexed. They currently have the zoning designation within Hancock County because they are not presently incorporated. But they are adjacent to the town limits. Um, they're located in a rapidly transitioning area with former residences being converted to collective useless. And the property currently has a single family home, an occupied home, but most of the acreage is unimproved, basically just a grass spot with us helping the company map on. Uh, next slide please. Our proposed use is an independent, senior, affordable housing community for tenants aged fifty-five and older. Um, affordable housing from our perspective means that it will be made so that no tenant pays more than approximately a third of their rent each month toward the cost of housing. And it will be specifically reserved for the households of modest income, which I'll get into a little bit more detail in a moment. We are seeking to construct a single building, two stories with fifty apartments, two bedrooms each. Keller will be the owner, the developer, and the general contractor, and our affiliate company, New Generation Management Incorporated, which has owners in common with Keller, will also provide a property management. Next slide please. This is a draft concept only of the proposed site, just to give. People in town an idea of our proposed use. This has not been fully engineered and we're certainly not asking for you to approve this site plan this evening. This is just to give you an overall idea. Uh, the single building will be in an L shape with the main entrance in the middle corner. Um, there will be an off-street parking to meet the elderly housing development standards and town ordinance. Um, and we will be designing all of the access landscaping, all of those features to meet town development standards. That's a lot of keys. And I've tried to overlay that drawing on the property lines here to give you a sense of the scale of the project. Uh, next slide please. We have developed across Indiana for over thirty years, and there is a similar development in Plainfield, Indiana that we think is a good. It, it's a good example of what we intend to build here. It's called Kenley Court, three, six, five, zero Clark's Creek Road in Plainfield. This is a very similar layout, design, fuse, and styling, and it has the same target tenants. Uh, next slide please. Uh, this is the rear of the building, which would be the longest edge, uh, as you can see on the plan, just to give you an example of the spade. Next slide please. So as we are seeking annexation, our expected impact uh is outlined in the fiscal plan, which would be for annexation of just the properties as they stand today. Um, there were no issues there. The fiscal plan was approved. The proposed use, which has not, again, not been fully engineered. Um, we believe will also be able to be accommodated by the site and serviced from the town. Uh, we've had long discussions with town staff now so that we understand um capacity and utilities. The, the number of residents who will be living there, the site will be able to accommodate them. Next slide please. The people who will be living there are first and foremost seniors, those aged fifty-five and older, probably aspiring to be older and in that range. Um, and we surveyed our own properties throughout Indiana, and we find that even in two bedroom apartments like what we want to build. They are overwhelmingly single individuals. There are some households that are couples. But we expect with um fifty apartments, we would have about fifty-seven tenants. The income limits for the program that we will use to develop for a single person household would be just over fifty-four thousand dollars annually. For two people, it would be just under sixty-two thousand dollars annually. Uh, because these are seniors and we don't see families in these senior units. There would be no impact to schools. Um, like I just said, town has confirmed there's going to be no um utility capacity concerns. Based on surveys of our other existing similar properties, we will expect less than one vehicle per unit, and because. We will have a lot of retirees that will not be commute-related traffic rushes and there will not be school-related rushes. Um, per the plan commission's recommendation. We also did a survey of property values for similar projects, and we found statewide our property values of the surrounding. Um, properties increase in line with state average. Next slide please. Uh, the biggest impact though is that there will be a new, safe, and affordable, accessible housing option for seniors of modest incomes who want to stay in their house scheme. Again, surveying other properties that we've developed in Indiana, we see the overwhelming majority of people that move into these projects move into them from elsewhere in town. So we would expect the same thing to be the case here. Um, and the maintenance free senior living will free up additional housing stock as people age and are less able to take care of their own properties. Which perpetuates the cycle of homeownership. It turns over. Residential properties in town, which gives a healthy housing market is actually something that's called out in the Hancock County Comprehensive Plan as. As a goal of these are a, a positive thing that these properties provide. Next slide please. So we wanted to make sure that this request was consistent with the community plans, and there are actually three, since we're kind of in a border area that covered this. Property. This town has its own plan. Hancock County has a new plan. There was also a Mount Comfort corridor plan created in two thousand twenty-one. Uh, that all supports this type of use in this type of area, if not this area specific. Next slide please. Uh, this is really information dense and I'm going to apologize. So I'll try my best to summarize. But essentially, the, the plans all call this area where we are talking about tonight, they all call it basically a mixed-use area. And mixed use is defined variously within the plans as being both. Capable of having commercial and residential uses. And in both the Hancock County Plan and the Mount Comfort Plan, they specifically further define appropriate uses within a mixed-use district. As including apartment buildings. They go on to say there should be no more than four stories and no more dense than about twenty-five units per acre. We are proposing two stories, seven units per acre. Next slide please. Um, and next slide please. Next slide please. So a stated objective of the town of New Palestine's comprehensive plan is to investigate the possibility of additional rental units. And of the three plans that I'm referencing is, is the oldest one. The two newer ones. Do investigate that um possibility of rental housing, and that backs up entirely our own market research, which shows that there is a great need to be here. Specifically, the Mount Comfort Corridor, which admittedly has a bigger area than just its southern end in Palestine, but. Based on the ten-year expected growth, looking at current trends, there's going to be a shortage of about fourteen thousand housing units in that area by two thousand thirty. And it specifically says, the Mount Comfort Plan says that an aging population in the corridor and surrounding region. Creates demand for appropriate senior housing, including. Housing that's higher density than what's available, and that's within walking distance to amenities, which you can certainly have. With the fresh market across the street and the hospital or the wellness center to the south of fifty-two. Next slide please. Um, the Mount Comfort analysis also goes on to state that Palestine, in terms of its peer communities within Hancock County, has both an older population. And more population, maybe fifty thousand dollars or less than elsewhere in the area. An identified weakness of the plan is housing availability for households making less than seventy-five thousand dollars a year. And it specifically identifies the U S fifty-two Mount Comfort Corridor as a target area to serve that demographic. Next slide please. The county goes on to define very specific objectives, which we believe we meet directly, which include creating attainable housing and a wide variety of price points. Supporting an appropriate balance of both denser and wholesale housing products that'll cushion younger and older households. In areas that are well-served by infrastructure and amenities. There's also a stated goal to provide an equitable, balanced, and sustainable diversity of housing types, densities, arrangements, and affordability levels. To accommodate the needs, desires, and lifestyles of existing and future residents of all incomes, houseable compositions, and life stages. And specifically to do that, it suggests to increase the amount, type, and availability of affordable and attainable housing options. Uh, next slide please. So with all of that said, um, and requesting annexation is also a request for a zoning change. It specifies five criteria for examining zoning requests, and we believe we are meeting those. The first is that the proposal is consistent with the area's plans. That's what I just thrown down about. The second is that the current conditions will not be negatively affected, which we believe they will not be. Um, as I stated, the area is in transition. What we are proposing will be either complementary or enhancing of the current conditions in the area. Specifically, the northwest corner of fifty-two and six hundred west. Uh, there's an abandoned home that. We can't, it's not on our property. We wish we could do something about it, but we will enhance that corner for sure. Criteria number three is that the change will result in the best use for the property. Um, the comprehensive plan specifically calls for misuse and mislocation. Criteria four says that property values will not be negatively affected. Because all of the accountability is under one roof, we will own this for the long haul and we will manage it. That first and foremost. Keeps property value down. Um, the fact that we've taken a look at what we've done elsewhere in the state and have not seen any sort of decline whatsoever. Um, also goes toward that point. And the last one is that the request promotes responsible development and growth by creating desired density in an area that can be accommodated. And this is actually a less intense use than what's currently allowed in the zoning district. It's a less intense type of development than what the plan is called for. We believe it makes for a very good transition between a partial corridor on fifty-two. And the neighborhoods further north on the other side of the river. So with all of that said. I understand that the council cannot take action to see. So with all of this, we are respectfully requesting um approval of the annexation and the zoning of R three to go along with it. It answer any additional questions about either the annexation request or the project itself.
I have a question.
Yes.
Um, are you all going to support uh smoke-free housing?
Yes.
Okay, so it'll be a smoke-free property?
Yes.
Okay. There's a demand for that in the field that I work in, but I hear more and more senior and non-senior multi-unit housing. There's a real lack of that in Hancock County versus Hamilton County, where it seems to be. The norm, and here folks are hard pressed to find, you know, healthier, you know, housing, multi-housing. So, thank you. I appreciate that.
Any other questions from the board? My only question is, uh, is the lot big enough to support two parking places per apartment?
We believe that it is.
Okay.
We believe that it's a, we will apply for an elderly. A special exception, which also for zero point eight parking spaces for this particular type of housing.
Well. According to our code, that doesn't, that doesn't fall under that jurisdiction.
Um, I'm looking specifically at section um one point zero three each of your design standards. Which says elderly housing minimum parking is a zero point eight spaces per unit.
Okay, well, I'm looking at uh.
We will exceed that. Um, and we have room for more should the town decide more is warranted. But we also know that there will not be the need for two per unit.
Well, in our, in our code, it says independent and semi-independent living facilities. Shall meet the provisions required for single-family, two-family, or multi-family use, whichever is applicable in the district in which they are located. So in that district, two parking places per apartment are loc, are uh called for.
If we apply for the special exception and do not receive it, we will meet that standard.
Okay, that's, I just want to make sure you have room for two parking places.
Yes.
Okay. Which you may or might not have to do. I'm just asking the question.
Um, I do have another question, and I don't, and I, I wasn't here on May seventeen. Um. Is, is your housing, does it call for like common areas like? Um, like conference, co, community rooms or pools and things like that or?
Yes, uh, this development specifically, it'll have a leasing office on-site, love a multipurpose community room, uh, with a kitchen. We will have a theater, a fitness room, and a just kind of a generic gaming and craft room. And outside amenities, we will have a covered uh pavilion um for people that want to have picnics, love walking trails, raised garden beds.
Okay. And someone raised, the last meeting I was at, when they talked, someone raised concern about. With the senior living that sometimes it doesn't become senior living. And there was a concern that, you know, it would become. Multi-family members, you know, moving in there. You guys have covenants covering that and everything, right?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I thought. Okay, cool. I mean, Johnny and Suzie can come spend the night with grandma and grandpa, but not take up residence pretty much.
Correct.
All right, all right.
Is there any questions from anybody? On the town departments? If not, we'll open up questions from the public.
I, I will ask one.
Okay.
Randy there, is that something that you might be able to provide? You know, that kind of commitment? So, you know, we can look at that.
Absolutely, yes.
Yeah. Fair.
You mean like the school bus will never have to pull in there?
I know.
Yeah.
That's one of the main things I've heard like question on like how do you? Make sure that doesn't happen. I'm like, well, it's not happening at Springhurst. I, you know what I mean? Um, in the general building or whatever. So, um, but yeah, I've had a couple of people ask me that, like how the, how does that covenant work?
So the, the funding that we used to construct it, um, when we received that, we have to commit to following standards set by, I believe it's the Housing for Older Persons Act. I want to say like nineteen ninety-three, and within that it specifies it must be made available to people at a certain age level. And they define those households very specifically, and if there's someone underage, um, it's. Yeah, it, it doesn't. I did a survey of all our senior units. There certainly are rare instances where a grandparent might have legal custody of a grandchild. And I can't say that would never happen, but in the hundreds of units that I looked at that we have in Indiana, there's not an instance of that.
Okay. Leave a test will be the first. Hmm, leave a test will be the first. Oh.
Uh, now we can open uh the floor for public comments, and you can ask uh. Keller Development, or you can ask the town council or a jammer. If you have any questions and. Uh. Each person will have five minutes to make a comment. Adam?
Yeah, Adam Axon, uh, live at forty through fifty, West Woodbridge, Land and property. Uh, you had mentioned uh this being a walkable, the, the amenities close uh with the. Uh, grocery store or the restaurant on the cross the thing. Does your plan in uh. Include or take into account the town's uh walking and biking uh plan and allow for. Safe passage across fifty-two for people that would want to walk. That direction across fifty-two.
Yes, we'll have a sidewalk along uh. Along the road front of our property line, which would be just six hundred being touched fifty-two. But we would connect to any pedestrian construction against building that plan.
Okay, that would be a concern because it is isolated. There is a development for, for people who would want to. To walk further than the end of your property line. Something to think about. Thank you.
To walk further than the end of your property line, something to think about. Thank you.
Steve Brandy, one five seventy East Main Street. Regarding the lower units or round level units.
Would they what?
Have a patio.
Oh.
After my question, but it was just, was wanting to have a whole long question, so.
So I guess the upper units wouldn't have a balcony here, would they? Okay, okay. Anybody else?
My memory escapes me in your first presentation. You have a building one way, you said you were trying to flip that, what's that, flip and that.
Yes.
Yes.
And I think they tried to move the entrance over as far as they could to be closer to the entrance across the trees. Of course, it's never gonna line up because they're. They're possible.
I guess, uh, three, uh, thirteen thirteen South Paul's Mall Drive, uh, resident. Uh, I spent, uh, last fifteen years in my career actually working in portable housing, and I've been on the great for that time as well. I'd just like to speak out those in support of that and like to highlight a few things. The council considers, you know, the positive impact in the community. That great outline, uh, with the right and safe and portable housing that will, you know, further, uh, bright opportunities for, uh, our current residents. Uh, I think the other thing to consider is the low risk of this asset. It's like a point oh two percent default rate across the nation. Um, we specialize in this, uh, mergers capital, current one again, we specialize in this financing and providing equity. And we've got zero defaults in our portfolio, um, there's extreme oversight, uh, Brad was alluding to it with. Uh, I mean, fifteen-year compliance period, that's there is, yeah. State agencies that oversight and making them follow rules that are hot air and. Well, what typical market rate developers require. Uh, I think the last and most important part is, you know, uh. Quality of developer they are and the partnership that the town would get with Keller Development that is. Multi-generational, uh, company that specializes in developing these projects, that's what they do. Uh, they're committed to it, they own, develop, build, and manage. And that's a huge attribute to, uh. Longing asset and this partnership for the town. And supportive.
Thank you, Jess. Is there anybody else? If not, and there's no more questions in the council. We'll, uh, close the public hearing and reconvene the town council meeting. Next item on the agenda is department reports. Police Chief Robert Ely.
Been busy, but no.
Everything's going good, huh?
To your heart, hang on.
Okay.
There is an article in the paper, there was a rapist that was found guilty and prosecutor needed a point. But let's know that if it wasn't for the hard work from the New Palestine Police Department with all the evidence that they had, that. It made it very easy to put him away, so I want to say congratulations to you guys.
Thank you.
Mention Jesse in particular, but yeah.
It's fun breaking into new detective.
Has that sentence been passed yet?
No, July fourteen, I think.
Yeah, uh, Yvonne and I, we met with a, a young fellow, he was from Okra. Uh, he was, uh, very informational, had a lot of energy. Uh, he's actually our liaison, and he doesn't like that term, but that's what he is, he covers what? Maybe a quarter of the state. Uh, so we were able to kind of share some things and ideals with New Palestine, and we've never really participated in an Okra grant, so. Uh, he had a lot of ideas, he sent us a lot of information, one of them that I, I'm gonna look into is our comprehensive plan. It, uh, it's two thousand and fifteen, uh, they can, I think it was a fifty, sixty thousand dollars. We could get a grant to update and redo our comprehensive plan, which I think would be beneficial. Um, there's several, there's a, uh, uh, planning grant, like for the town center. Uh, there's a grant that they can tie in with that, so he had a lot of information, it was a really good hour-long chat.
With him and hopefully we get some good feedback. Over movement with things.
Another thing. I met with, uh, Brady, uh, Dryer from Commonwealth. Our MS four, Niall and I, we spent some time with him last week, uh, or like two thousand and twenty-four, we have to, uh. Uh, redo our ordinances for MS four, uh, they've kind of put a draft together and I'll share this with. The attorneys and then by years and I'd like to get it. We have until next year, but I'd like to go ahead and get that for it's approved and. So, or that, or this, that, that would tie into Mr. Jones's property versus the one acre. It goes down to, I think, tw- uh, a quarter of an acre, uh, so we wouldn't have had any issues at that point, so. There's a lot of things that will help benefit the town. That's what I got.
Didn't we have problems with the, uh. Income requirement on that Oprah stuff?
He didn't mention that.
Last, last time when we considered that, there was income requirements that we didn't meet.
There, there are some.
Minimum is, or, you know.
There's such a gamma, such a ton of different ways to get grants. That we didn't get into specifics.
Okay.
Of, of anything, but, um, he sent us almost an overwhelming bond of information. So we'll hopefully sifting through that and see what we can do.
But I think you're right, Clint, that is a challenge for New Palestine this area.
It was last time, I know, but, you know, I don't know that by change now, and who knows?
Fair.
That it, Jim?
Yeah, uh, we got the summer fest coming up, so hopefully everybody attended. Sharing that, I think, uh, was it kickoff Friday evening, some concerts and then, uh, Jeep show. Jeep in here, then they got the, the car shows coming up this weekend, so. A lot of concerts, so hopefully we have good weather, it's supposed to be ninety, so.
Yeah, it's gonna be warm.
Be warm.
Hey Steve, did you get all your barricades and stuff?
I did. I'll put the other. Ready to go. So the closure is gonna be, uh, E and B's just. They're like, it's Friday, then watching that project through town, they're gonna, uh, give them do some striping. Uh, I just talked to the project manager. Half an hour ago to see if they were gonna get the, uh. This is center line, striping through town, done, he said they'll have it done tomorrow, and actually the road will be. First ship at two down Friday morning, so. Huge window there between when they're done, but we close.
Twelve hours.
They did give that, yeah. Right, hopefully they get it, well, tomorrow they're supposed to get the, the striking real quick.
Yeah, yeah.
All the arrows and everything. Get that down, hopefully get birds swabbed up, and then, uh, hopefully it'll be Friday morning, actually. And we'll run until Sunday at noon. And the hard closure will just be four fifty to five hundred.
And they have a detour.
I have. Yeah, the, your.
Yeah. What, what else you got there, Steve?
Clint, if I might add one more, uh, the town dump truck took a dump. Uh, it has the oil pan and the transmission pan because the rust, it's starting to leak. Uh, so we took it to, uh, Riley Park, they couldn't fix it, so we took it to Ford. Uh, with this truck, you have to take the cab off to get to the transmission. Uh, that was a thirteen, it's gonna be a thirteen thousand dollar repair. Uh, the truck only has twenty-six thousand miles on it. So we want to make a repair, but we took it to another, uh, dealership today that repair, their bid is nine thousand. Uh, we'll probably get one more bid and then next council meeting. I, I think we'll have to get it scheduled to get it into a shop, we're not able to use it this week for the. Cause of the leak on. Yeah, it's, it's kind of razor thin on the bottom of that pan, just start, it just started leaking when we were putting the lights up this week. Yeah. But like Yvonne said, it's new trucks, probably eighty thousand dollars.
Yeah. Yeah, twenty-four thousand dollars, or twenty-four thousand miles, it's not really wore out.
Yeah, it's just the rust from the salt spreader. It's rough on that.
Well, let us know on that, Jim.
Yeah, yeah.
Yvonne?
Couple of quick things to honor this complaint, um, they're finishing the official writing of it. Um, until they publish it, um, that's the state board of counts, until it's published, we can't discuss it in the public.
We already did.
So as soon as it's, no. As soon as it's, uh, that's published, oh. Uh, hope it all went real well, um, and then Jenny and I are training next week, getting in Ford lane. So that's all I have.
Okay, uh, next item on the agenda is, uh, we opened up the floor for, uh, public comments and anybody that. Has any topic they want to discuss, they have five minutes to do so.
I just got a question of the jet, cause what is. Over the streets. Metal drive. Going east off of General Road, doesn't go anywhere. Comes down to Waverby Street, you can't get back out of the highway. When they closed the roads before, they had this special. Even though you got a marked. Detour, people going Shelby County go that way. And we had people coming up and down Metal Drive. And they get down, they can't get out, they turn around, they come back. One year I made a sign loan down there, hopefully help them. I think you can't close roads because that's all the only way in and out. But perhaps you could just have a no outfield sign or something down there to teach people from coming down. I mean, it isn't the end of the world, but. One person come down or out of town, I get rush.
Yeah. Exactly.
If anything you can do, doesn't matter, I don't care. But, but, uh. For their benefit.
Right.
So they're coming in off of. Yeah, going.
Yeah. You know, they're usually going down a bit earlier. They'll just go south on Jim Road, look for the first shortcut, you know. Where, where, you know, road close on is a challenge, you know. I don't present any new, if it don't work, it don't work.
No, I got something. Yeah.
Chris, morning, I, um, shooting pretty clean. Um. I gave up this presentation back in March a couple of times, and I just want to give everybody an update. Um, so those of you that weren't at those meetings, basically the problem is, this is a, a GIS view of. Uh, the Copperstone subdivision, with our subdivision up on Jim Road. Um, obviously this is an older one, it's pretty much already built out at this point. Uh, twenty-six of the forty-six in the C section are sold to a former landlord. Uh, with the title F K H Homes. And we had a meeting about this over the vice of council. Uh, was, was, uh, appointed by planning commission, we had a first meeting on the twenty-fourth of May. So in that meeting, uh, Ron had done some additional research in this section up here. He counted ten homes up there that were owned by. S F R J V H D. So, and he did some research on that and the S F R stands for single-family rentals. Uh, the research showed that the joint venture with a company called Tricon. Currently owns and grants for one thousand homes. And his plans to increase an additional fifty thousand in the near future, so. Um, there's some interesting things going on here and, uh, we're going to, uh, continue to look through this. So this first meeting on the twenty-fourth of May, uh, we identified four problem, five, six problem areas. Just gonna read those briefly to you, both planning divisions that approve apartments or rental homes for Copperstone. Uh, number two, considering that at least thirty-six of the two hundred forty homes built are currently owned by four of the landlords. This represents fifteen percent of the subdivision. Uh, this could have effect, could have effect in property values, and so there's some concern, uh, with the individual homeowners in that area. Number three was the process that these companies have for selecting and maintaining tenants. And appropriate maintenance for grounds that needed. Number four, I could, I could see standards. Uh, there were, one of these units up here is listed on Fleet Zillow for twenty-five hundred dollars a month rent. Uh, so if the rent is twenty-five hundred a month, why can't they sell with single family for the mortgage? Principal interest on four hundred thousand dollar home is very near this amount. Uh, seems like they just want to finish the bill as soon as possible and get this off their books, so, um. That's occupancy standards is a concern. Number five, uh, local builders work with the guidance to build up what the economy allows. Uh, so which brought some example, two hundred forty homes built over the course of ten years, that was a regional builder. Um, she had three hundred ten homes over ten years. Six bullet point is getting rental properties, uh, basically difficult for young families to build well, it's elevate the cost. Of the also, those are the six areas that we're, uh, having questions about, digging into. Anybody wants to come, our next meeting is next Wednesday. So anybody wants to come, it's gonna be right here at the town hall at six thirty, uh, we'd love to have your, your input. Uh, our few tenants, our few residents of Copperstone, uh, we're very concerned about this. Talking last week, they finally here next week as well, so. Uh, again, anyone that's gonna come to that meeting. Uh, so maybe, thank you.
Thanks, Chris.
I have a question on that. Fast forward, cause again, I was not here on the seventeenth, and when a lot of this transpired, or, and then the committee formed. Legally, I mean, what's the? Any recourse or we're gonna have to redo something, or are we in a?
It's a developing area of law, um, I don't think there's any. Local recourse at this point, it's probably something asking now from the state, and we're changing the law.
Okay.
But I'm, I'm actually going to, uh, the Indiana Municipal Motors Association Conference tomorrow, and. It's been one of the topics we discussed.
Okay.
And I'll ask about, but I, I think locally your hands are tied at this point.
Okay.
Yeah, some of the things, you know, we're, we have to think about this as public relations, uh, issues now.
Well. If you, a lot of places have ordinance that regulate rental property and they call for inspections every time it's rerented. Yearly inspections and stuff like that, and that, that would be one way to keep track of what's for rent and stuff in town. Because, you know, they're required to do that, or, you know, I don't know, the fine, fine tables and all that stuff, but. You know, I don't know the fine, fine tables and all that stuff, but that would be something to look at, would be an ordinance to uh. Have rental inspections and, and a register.
Yeah, one of the areas we talked about was, in fact, Tim brought this up, that the R two is for residential housing. And this essentially is business, so. Yeah, these rentals and area like that, that's essentially a business, so. We're not gonna solve this problem here, which is.
Yeah.
Investigate if we wanna.
Yeah, but I.
We can't stop what's going on. We want at least, you know, put them on notice in this commission.
I mean, there's people that move out of their house and rent it out. I don't know how, you know, you can't.
Yeah, but that's what we'll do.
Yeah, that's what I mean.
You know, that's not wholesale selling. There's eighteen homes in a row right over there on the east side. Eighteen. That's all for this. Uh, per se homes.
Dale?
Yeah, I heard uh, four, four sixty thousand. Um, I like the support, Chris, and what are you doing? I was at the meeting last week. Um, it failed to get posted, but um. I'd like to see the council support. Because Chris was the only one there from a committee or from, from the town. Um, we did have several other people and some of the comments are very interesting. It's not just about. When you know, when you say rental homes, it's not just about rental homes. There were comments from residents there that these homes are being purchased or seem to be being purchased by. Essentially trucking companies that have truckers coming in with their tractors, park them in the driveway overnight, sleep in the house. And leave in the morning. So you got heavy truck traffic going in it. You have uh, lawn care businesses that are using the dead ends of the streets to park their trailers. They live in the neighborhood. But they have, they have this equipment that they have to store somewhere. So they're, they're using those dead ends to park those trailers. Um, you have people building cooking facilities in the garages. What they're doing, I have no idea, but basically a kitchen in their garage. Um. So there's some really strange things going on, you know, one thing to say rental, but there's all kinds of stuff going on. And this is a brand new neighborhood. Um, and many of the people, the people that were at that meeting last week. Purchased this without knowing any of this. They had no idea that these were gonna be rental houses. When they purchased, so. Um, you know, we'd like to see some support for what Chris is trying to do and I think that's very important. Especially going forward in the other sub. Which we're, I'm sure we're gonna have one.
Has this builder been known to do this? With other properties?
I'm not sure if they've done it in another, I'm sure they have, but uh, it, it is new to us and it did catch us off guard. Uh.
Cause we heard nothing about this when they.
That wasn't the sales pitch.
No, it wasn't.
So, but you know, the. The golden or the silver lining is, you know, they have called several times when, when a piece of property comes up for sale, they're looking. So eventually they're gonna work their way right back up to that front row. And you're gonna have the, the moment of your life to, you know, go right back at them with the, you know. But hopefully before then, we'll, we'll be armed and, you know, have enough information to.
Yeah, we're, I'm, I'm hearing, I'm not sure where I heard this, but the, the Corso field's having. Some of their subdivisions, Corso field, same things happening there.
Yeah, statewide.
The, one of the gentlemen that lives in Copperstone is. There is on the uh, police force account and then there's all the town council folks there and. Uh, this is a similar thing that they're dealing with, so maybe reaching out to them and trying to. You know, compare those as well. Uh, with their town council and planning commission.
Do they have an HOA?
Uh, yeah, they have an HOA and it's owned by a company. So I called, I called the HOA and it's a. Um. Property management firm. And I said. Don't you guys really? I said, I need to speak to some, somebody. I need to speak to a resident. And they said, well, it hasn't been turned over to. Doesn't that take the happen in, you know, thirty-five, eighty percent?
Right.
And. They said, well, not always. So Copperstone is obviously holding on to it or when I was holding on to it. Um, so they can, you know, make it easier for them to do this.
The, the only thing I can say is, you know, they're, the homes are nice. I mean. Everyone that I've went through was on a final. They've been nice homes. And like he said, the rent's twenty-five hundred dollars a month. You know, that, so really it's not a problem now, you know, it's. Is it gonna be a problem? And you could look out in the parking lot and you can tell somebody owned a car or leased a car or rented a car, you know? It's just, you know, we just hope that it doesn't become a problem. It, it's. It's not that we wanna deal with this, but right now it's not a problem. We just don't want it to become a problem.
Well, I think it is, is a problem and some things that Dale just talked about, and those folks were saying, I was. Uh, nobody here.
Well, we have, we have ordinances in our code.
Yeah.
That limit that kinda stuff.
Yeah.
Already.
Yeah. Let's get on.
Yeah, especially if they're.
Get them on right now.
Right.
Can I add something, Chris? If you're gonna have a meeting like this. I need to advertise it properly. Should you need to let me know, will I, I think?
Right.
So that's why last week when you tried to have a meeting, it wasn't, I, I didn't know anything about it.
Yeah.
It wasn't public.
It's on the twenty-fourth, we gotta read that one. She just mentioned the gentleman in Iran. They, I just did follow that it did.
Yeah, it is, it's, yeah, it's my responsibility to make sure that it gets advertised. So if you want this meeting next week. You know, shoot me an email when you do these, make these decisions so that I.
Well, that's why.
You know, answer that and have that posted this early.
So is it the dumbass one that I mentioned?
Hey Doug, you wanna weigh in on these meetings?
As soon as possible.
It'd be helpful.
If there's. Oh, but I write it down.
Okay, so they can have those meetings that. Like only two members of the planning commission can be there?
Because the, the planning commission officially established this committee.
Yes.
And appointed people to it, it becomes a subcommittee subject to open door law.
No, thanks.
If people just decide, hey, let's get together and talk about this. It's not an official subcommittee of the planning mission and it's not subject to open door law.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I didn't know it was officially appointed as a subcommittee. That's why I was asking about posting and advertising. I didn't even. Register that.
So, so at these meetings, they can't have a majority of the planning commission there?
They can if they have.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, I think. Is it three or four of you guys don't think?
There's four of us, yeah.
And so it is a majority. That's why they advertise.
And so, uh, we're allowed to have two correct events if we forget to advertise or whatever.
Well, there, there's two issues that come into play. So you have a serial meeting if you have more than uh, a majority or again. Because this was an officially established subcommittee, it becomes its own public body. It's a governing body, subject to open door law. Just even if they had an official committee, they appointed all uh, citizens, it becomes its own governing body. Um, so it becomes subject to open door law. You can have. You got all signed to go out and have your own little meeting, talk about stuff. You could do that. Uh, but because it was officially established, it becomes the uh, its own governing body.
Right, if I, if I wanna talk to Ron just about the, this issue, can we just have lunch?
You and Ron?
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay, so I can't do it with more than two people.
Right.
So those meetings need to be advertised?
The subcommittee.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, and Ron's aware of that.
And the first, the first one was, the first, the one important one I mentioned. Was the peace meeting, these notes were, um, wasn't advertised.
Anybody else? Uh, okay, next thing on our agenda is uh, council comments. And uh. I guess the only comment uh, I was gonna start. Uh, I was gonna ask Jim about Willow Ridge. What's the story?
Uh, nothing right now. Yeah, it's, it's kinda dormant.
The point of being two weeks ago.
Yep.
Brandy?
Um. I will not be here for the July nineteenth meeting. I will be. Playing softball. I'm sorry, no, watching um, softball out of state in a sunny area. So um, I apologize for not being here, but it's a vacation. And um, the other thing is just, I wanna encourage everyone to come out uh, for Summer Fest. Um, it's a wonderful community event, bringing the community together. Um. And um. It's a bright light for our community. The main street has worked very hard on it. Um, we have local young people who are participating in the concert series this year. And I think that's a really cool thing as well, honoring some of our. Our recent graduates and um, I'm just really excited about the opportunity and how hard they worked on it and how much this has grown, so. I hope folks will come out and support it. That's it.
Thanks, Brandy.
You're welcome.
Uh, Angie?
Uh, we have budget talks that are coming up again, and I just want the council to be aware that I will be thumping for the police again. Since we have all these apartments and stuff coming up. I read articles in the IBJ that were coming up where. Police departments are offering ten thousand sign-on bonuses, seventy-five thousand dollars for two years of service, sixty-two thousand. Just for first starting out. We just, we need to take that into consideration while we're approving all these properties to be built, that we're taking care of, that are first responders in our police department.
Thanks, Angie.
Well, I'm gonna cause a stink, so I'm just doing it for warnings.
That was another thing that uh, I was gonna ask you about Yvonne and I forgot till Angie just mentioned that. Uh. Do we have a budget meeting coming up July twenty-fifth?
I sent y'all an email. I didn't hear back from anybody.
Over. All state.
I'd like to know who's, yeah, I need to, a few. Um, yeah, finance commissioner, whatever you call it before. Where we all have a, a guess whether or not, on the budget before we do the official budget workshop and.
Are, are you volunteering for that, Angie?
Yeah, I'm volunteering for that.
Okay.
So I'm hoping for one more from the, from the town council so that we can all be. Present with that, all the, you know, department heads and. And hammer through all the line items. Like succession.
That's all I have.
We'll have to get somebody else. We'll find somebody.
Just say you'll do it.
I don't wanna force my opinion on anybody.
You.
When did that start? Is that the new, in your last quarter of service, are you turning over? I love. I'm sorry, the last half.
Is there anything else?
And someone else, very.
Bless, I, we see I had a pie here and pie down at the wastewater plant and ice cream back here. Oh, that is sugar high. Yeah.
Happy birthday.
Yeah, thank you. Recip.
We could have you at the same age, Jim. I'm not sure about that.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
All second.
It's been moved or seconded. Uh, all those in favor vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Adjourned.